July 28th, 2025 meeting of the Newcastle Planning and Zoning Commission order for item business to be recalled.
Gordon Harnes.
President.
Kyle Evans.
Here.
You will mind.
Here.
Clay Warren is absent. Nick Lewis.
Here.
Okay, we do have a forum. Proceed with business. Item number two is to consider approval of agenda as presented.
Just the two.
Noting on the agenda, item eight and item nine are requests for continuances. Later than that, the agenda as I have presented.
Make a motion to approve agendas modified.
I have a motion and a second in favor of signature five with my first hand. Be unanimously approved. Consider approval of minutes from the June 30th, 2025 meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented, all in favor of signature five with my first hand. Be unanimously approved. Item four is to report to City Council decisions on planning commission recommendations of the last meeting. Wasn't thinking of sending it off.
Yeah, we did. We did. Just as items eight and nine are continued, the items six A and B were continued by the applicant. That's the Riverview Villages Land Use Amendment and HUD recents. And then item C was a six C, Taco Bell facade deviation, and that was approved by City Council. Six D was the facade deviation at Del Rex, 3455 Del Rex, and Planning Commission had made a conditional approval, recommendation of approval based on that they would submit the required documents and engineering stand plans since they built that structure without permits. They failed to do so, so it got continued to the next city council meeting, August 11. Six E was the application for Jim Wilson Trust on 1955 North Main Street rezoning from General Agriculture to CC2, Community Commercial District. That was approved by City Council. Six G was a request by Jim and Cheryl Wilson for rezoning from A Agriculture and E2 Urban Estate Residential to CC2. That's the property that is off of 22nd and abutting the existing through tubing that through tubing is purchasing. Six I is a request by, this was Olivia Snow at 3521 Northwest 32nd, an application from CC2 and Ag, had a dual zoning on that property on Highway 37 and rezoned the entire parcel to CC2. Six K was a land use amendment from Suburban Estates to General Commercial for 16th and Highway 76, the northwest corner for future land use from Suburban Estates to General Commercial, and a rezoning from E1 to PUD was approved by City Council. Six N was a recommendation of the final plot for Town Center Plaza. That was approved by City Council. And six O was adoption of a ordinance amendment, exceptions to regulations for plating for the warranty, the lot split approval, allowing land that is zoned agricultural and is abutting a section line road is eligible to be, create six lots. And that was all of the planning mission items.
Item five is continuance request. As noted, items eight and nine are being continued at applicant's request. Item number six is citizens comments. Are there any citizens who'd like to be heard on any matter not on urgent? Seeing none, continue on. Item seven is lot split deed approvals. Appears with one. Is that the rezoned property?
That was the rezoned on Highway 37 that we discussed during that, that item that they, Snow Enterprises was splitting that lot, meeting all the CC2 requirements and upgrading the existing private road to city private road syndrome.
Any questions on that? Item number eight is a public hearing to consider an application for amendment to the 2040 feature land use map from General Commercial to mixed use residential and commercial for R and R Land Development LLC. Oh, I'm sorry.
Skip them out.
Continue.
Continued, and I said you were continuing it. I'm just deciding to read it. Sorry. Item 10, yeah, item nine is the same thing. It continued. Item 10 is a public hearing to consider an application for rezoning from Agricultural to E1 Suburban State Residential for Snow Enterprises LLC, range three west IM, Van Den Meridian, Plain County, Oklahoma. Property address is the northeast corner of Pennsylvania Avenue and southeast 32nd Street, Newcastle, Oklahoma. This is R 2025-00010.
Good evening. Julia here, a planner. The applicant is requesting to rezon the 2.25 acre lot highlighted on the map that red the central piece is 2.25 acres to E1 Suburban Estate Residential District. This lot is part of a larger 90 acre property that was recently purchased by Snow Enterprises from the Allison family. However, Snow Enterprises agreed to exclude this lot from the purchase because of the lot does not meet the minimum size requirements under the current zoning, General Agricultural District, a rezoning is necessary. Would you show the next slide, please? So that is approximately 133 acres altogether, and then the lines to the, your right is the zigzag lines is the new property line. The east side stays with the Allison's and Snow Enterprises purchased that 90 acre and the two and a half, 2.25 acres is the tract there on the south side. We do not anticipate any negative impacts to surrounding land uses. The area is characterized by a mixture of large lot residential and agricultural properties with the E1 zoning directly east of the subject site, and the land use amendment is not required. Staff supports and recommends approval of rezoning case number R 2025-10. Olivia, just be sure in time to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions on this?
I'm just trying to figure out exactly what I said. Is it just north 32nd?
32nd and east of Pennsylvania, yes.
East of, and, and the one side. She wouldn't sell me that piece.
East of the end.
I don't know.
It's my understanding she wanted to keep her pond.
Yeah, I wanted to buy the whole piece, but she wanted to keep that to it now so that she can, Olivia Snow, 1450 South Country Road. I wanted to buy the whole piece, but this was her family farm that like, as everybody knows, for years and years and years. And so she wanted to keep that red square so that she can come on 32nd Street and walk into that pond. And then, of course, we have all the north side access to the pond. I hadn't told her she could come fish anytime she wanted, but obviously, you know, when properties change hands, you want to like solidify. So she wanted that piece to keep, I don't know if she'll ever build a house there or not, but she mainly said she wanted access to the pond.
Did you buy it and dealing it back to her?
Yeah, because when we tried to close, we couldn't get a lot split because it was, it's, it was part of 130 whatever something acres, and that breaks that piece off into two and a half acres, which means it's less than five acres.
So it can't be A.
So it can't be Ag, so that's why I'm here.
Yeah, I was just getting to.
So in other words, I had to buy it and give it, now I got to give it back to her after you rezoned it to Ag. I mean to residential.
It's fine.
Sorry. I would love to keep it.
That's what I was trying to figure out, why you're rezoning and not her.
Yeah, because now I have, because I had to buy it to close. Her has been, has medical stuff going on, so we had to go ahead and get closed.
So E1, what, it's, it's the highest level, largest requirement?
Correct, right. It's the 80,000 square, 80,000 square feet requirement. It's right underneath Ag.
Right, down to 80,000.
Down to 80,000, yeah.
Two acres.
Minimum lot area is 80,000.
You could never really have more than one house on that piece anyways because of the.
Top of the ground.
Yeah, the pond, right there on 32nd out front, there's a pond on both sides of 32nd and a creek that runs between Ketne and Dingmatue. So you only see the pond in that one area, but there's a big creek on that left red line that's running north and south. So she, the only thing you could ever do here is build probably one house if she ever sells it.
Well, that would be besides the lot.
I would take it back, yeah.
And, and it's consistent with what's around there.
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right spot.
Yeah.
I didn't.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Is there any public comment on this application?
That was my question.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Recommend, recommend rezoning. I have a second. I have a motion, second to recommend this rezoning to City Council, all in favor of signature five with my first hand. Be unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Item number 11, a discussion of possible action on an ordinance amendment to section 153.081C1, C7 and C8, bridges and culverts regarding materials used in culverts and increase in standards.
Didn't we talk about this about a year ago?
Yes, but not this way. Not on this.
Thank you Commissioners Keith, Development Services Coordinator. The proposed ordinance amendment updates three subsequent drafts of Chapter 153, Prudence and Culverts. The purpose is to allow alternate culvert materials and modify the city's driveway detail. Or, so presently, the city ordinance 153.081C1 states that culverts shall be constructed of reinforced concrete or corrugated metal. The proposed ordinance would allow for the use of corrugated plastic pipe or CPP type product in high density polyethylene, HDPE, and polypropylene. The benefits of using CPP include longevity and construction efficiency. The service life of CPP is in the range of 50 to 100 years, and while a much lighter material than corrugated metal and reinforced concrete is also known for its strength and durability. CPP is commonly used in the construction industry today and is an approved pipe material for the state of Oklahoma, other jurisdictions including Norman and more. City staff have also received requests from the development community to use CPP within their projects, which have resulted in the city doing an evaluation of the CPP material to determine if it is appropriate for use in the driveway culverts. The city's evaluation determined the CPP is acceptable to be used as an approved material for residential driveway culverts for pipe diameters between 18 inches and 36 inches, provided it is installed in strict accordance with the manufacturer's specifications and industry's standards.
Next, you need to stay here.
Go to the next one, please. Oh, no, the background. Sorry. All right, so then regarding 153.081C7 and C8, so staff is proposing language that will permit the culverts for residential driveways on local streets with a speed limit of 25 miles per hour or less to use headwalls in lieu of sloped walls. The slope paving is a safety measure currently required for all driveway culvert pipes. Most speed residential streets are much less likely to have vehicles leaving the roadway at higher speeds that require mitigation of roadside obstacles associated with culvert in treatments. Staff is proposing to allow vertical headwalls as in treatments on these types of residential streets when the speed limit is 25 miles per hour or less. The residential driveway detail would be revised accordingly while also still allowing slope walls as per the current detail.
Before you go on, I'm somewhat confused here. Are you saying that you can just have a square wall and do your driveway?
So you want to roll to the next slide, next slide. So this is what we're taking for, for the headwalls and move the slope walls. These are being built, are commonly have been built in the city. This is one that's actually being proposed in Pacella. I think the example is from another jurisdiction, but that's currently being proposed with Executive Home Product there. So, but.
Pacella's present provisions requires for the slope.
That's right.
Odon.
Correct. Yeah, they, everything requires a slope paving present.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, um, so then staff is proposing language addressing the vertical profile of driveways over the new culverts. So the proposed language restricts the vertical crest and sag curves or humps and dips as a result of the culvert placement and minimum coverage requirements. These vertical curves can affect driveability for low profile vehicles, can also be unattractive in appearance. Residential driveway detail will also be revised accordingly. So I also provided a picture of a sloped culvert also that's somewhat typical of slope intersections for residential driveways. So I guess three things altogether would be the, the material, the allowance for headwalls on slow streets, and then also the regulating the, the vertical profile across the culvert.
So this is for residential only or all bridges and culverts?
Residential only would, we would allow, now, we're changing the HDPE, which would be, goes into just general culvert material for the slope walls and headwalls, that's for residential driveways. So we would allow culverts to be HDPE outside of that as, as presently.
So ADS pipe would be fine in commercial settings, is that what you said?
So it's a corrugated plastic.
Yeah, I know, ADS is a name of one of the.
Okay, I'm not familiar.
It's okay, go ahead. I've been trying to make sure I understand, is this all residential or is parts of this talking about residential and other parts would be applicable to all?
So the, the first code, you're going to go back to the first culvert material. So this is for all bridges and culverts addresses, this is where the construction materials are. And then it goes down to the next section is specifically about driveway.
So the driveways are about residential only?
Yes, yes.
But the materials are, are.
It could, overall could be applied to either.
Okay. Driveway is understood to be commer, to be residential? I mean, I would say, it says subdivision at the top, I think.
Keith, did you want to go over what Grant and Jim, Jim talked about, and then also the driveway agreement?
Yes, yes. So with this next slide here, we have, one more, please. So this is our evaluation that was performed by our WSB Engineering, kind of just taking a look at the, the product and see if it's appropriate for what we're using it for. The detail in the middle highlights, it's kind of utilizing our current detail, but also adding notes that's necessary to allow for headwalls versus the slope walls. So it kind of gets in also gets into the profile that would be regulated, and then the, you know, where it would be appropriate for as far as residential, slow speed residential streets. The last is acknowledgement, so, so this is an acknowledgement that is signed by the developer, owner and contractor for, within a building permit. So it would be required for any building permit that has a roadside ditch with a proposed driveway. Actually, it applies to roadside ditches in addition to culverts and driveway. And it basically just states that they will build the culvert and place it properly per manufacturer specification. It also gets into ownership response, or maintenance responsibilities of the, of the driveway, the culverts and the roadside ditch. So we're just, all that is already in code for, or required, we're just getting it out there in front so that they're, understand what their, what their responsibilities are for the building permit.
May, I was going to add just a one little, just some background because it actually started happening in the midst of Keith just joining us in May and with the epic rainfalls that we have this year and the amount of complaints that we've gotten from citizens regarding their neighbor's ditches or bar ditch and wanting to come back on either the city and saying the city didn't inspect it, the city didn't do something properly when, you know, it may have been in existence for 10 years and then you get these epic rainfalls. So what we came up with to make sure, even though it's stated in our subdivision regulations that bar ditches are the maintenance responsibility of the property owner, we don't maintain private bar ditches, we maintain.
Has it always been that way? I thought it was. So we're really not changing anything.
We're not changing anything. What we are doing is adding a piece to the building permit of this acknowledgement of proper construction, which piggybacks on allowing this new, new material for driveway culverts, specifically speaking to driveway culverts, not overall development where storm pipe would be required. But with each building permit, as Keith said, that is required to have a bar ditch, so it's usually not in a platted subdivision. These are individual, you know, single family lots, could be need to Ag to all the way down to E3 typically, or subdivisions that have bar ditches as means of their storm water, carrying their storm water. That we created this acknowledgement that will go with the building permit that requires the applicant owner or developer, developer owner to sign this and the contractor, if they're going to be the contractor, to sign this ahead of getting the building permit because they have to show that they are using the correct size, setting it at the correct flow line, making sure that all the proper compact, the subgrade material is there as well as the top. And it puts it on them and they sign this and then they get, it's part of their approval of the building permit process. And so that's, that's something that decides, this is really an addendum to the ordinance, this acknowledgement is going through administratively, we're putting this with the building permit that either way, this is going to go with the building permit. So we hopefully can mitigate some of the confusion when it comes to who, where does the responsibility lay? And it lies on that owner, developer and their contractor.
But we aren't adopting this as part of the ordinance. This is, you're telling us that this is something that's going to make our ordinance work.
Better. That's right, that's right. So this, the ordinance is the language in 153081C1, C7, C8, the three things that Keith had talked about, the use of the pipe, or excuse me, the material, and then the in treatment basically, and then obviously the standard detail will be updated, script like that if it's approved.
Is the in treatment, I mean.
He had a dated, a dated, detailed drawing for driveway. We refined it a couple of years ago when Liz was here, she couldn't read it. I mean, it was cloudy, it was unlegible. We, we updated the, the appendix A for this, for that detail. And so slope walls have always been required, when slope walls really are, and we've talked to John Canary about this, our street superintendent, he said really slope walls are for streets that are 40 miles an hour or greater, you know, to have that in a residential subdivision or an estate style subdivision isn't necessary. It can be a head wall without that slope wall.
That was not necessary.
It's more of a.
The cost or looks or is it?
It's looks aesthetic, it's more of a safety thing. Slope walls are required when you don't have a head wall.
Right.
And you're going on a road 40 miles an hour or greater and, yeah, we know what happened. That's, that's the whole idea behind a slope wall. Now, our detail in the past didn't ever, did not have that allowance for a head wall. This is allowance for that head wall in residential areas, streets that are 25 miles an hour or less.
So number eight, words that just specifically say residential driveway culverts, where number seven starts out just saying driveway crossing.
Where are you, where are you at?
Right, in the code. Yeah, just the language of the code. I mean, if I were reading that.
You said eight?
Number seven itself.
Seven, it's driveway culvert in treatment, yeah. So it's only specific to driveways, not.
But to me, a driveway, if I'm just reading that, I mean, an oil field driveway, any driveway entrance to anything says driveway to me. If I'm just reading it as a layperson, when you get down to number eight, it literally says residential driveway culverts on local populations. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't include specifically to say residential driveway crossing with a heading or a topic.
So seven is driveway crossing.
In, in general.
In general, and then number eight is concrete in treatment.
Okay, so it's intended to be separated that way?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify that as you're reading it, I'm going through this, I would be able to understand, okay, I can only have it in a residential space.
25 miles an hour.
For the head walls, right.
Yeah.
So this is all in subdivision regulations?
That is correct.
Okay. Which in my world means it's all residential. Yeah, okay, it's, I didn't understand that.
Well, I mean, we can have commercial subdivisions, like we do for Houseport. We can have.
Yeah, but if this is in subdivision reg, you've already said that.
It's covered, yes. It's, so, I mean, but this is specific when it says residential driveway culvert. Everything highlighted in yellow is new length.
Yeah, yeah, I get that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I've got two questions. This CCP, which most of this, we kind of call ADS, that comes in two forms, it comes in single wall and dual wall, and they are very different forms. And I don't know if we want to address that, but I want to talk about it so that we can have that conversation. So obviously the dual wall is slip lined on the inside, so it would be like a concrete pipe made out of plastic inside the coordination.
So it will flow water.
Well, now, having said that on one side of my mouth, we've got corrugated culverts everywhere, right? Okay? The other problem with single wall ADS pipe is, it's light and flexible and easy to do stuff with, but it doesn't stand up to weight very well. And I.
And I apologize because I'm in a world with a lot heavier weight than cars, okay? But I promise you, a single wall ADS pipe will not stand up 12 inches if I run a ten wheeler across it. Over a long time period. You see what I'm saying? Now, that's dirt, that's not asphalt, which is more structurally sound, right? But I'm a little concerned about the single wall with 12 inches. Does that make sense? Because it's pretty flexible. I mean, if I push on it, I can, I can push it a little bit even with my hand, right? But, but it's very flexible and we can use it for stuff. Anyway, I don't know how we want to fix this, but single wall with 12 inches on top of it makes me a little nervous. If we've got concrete on top of it, maybe that's okay because it's bridging over and it's spreading the loads, right?
These will be-
Excuse me, but this, the spec that's here conforms to ODOT's spec for the use of this. My understanding, they require two foot.
I don't remember. I don't remember. In my world, it depends on what kind of equipment I'm running across about him and material I got put on top of the bridge.
From what I've, from what I've seen was bulge is what's the cover. I didn't-
But that's manufacturer's rec, not ODOT.
Right, and I haven't, didn't look specifically at the coverage on the look on.
And then the other question is, if you cover this with enough fill to, dirt fit anyway, maybe concrete-
Concrete would certainly bridge it better, absolutely.
But if, if you don't, our normal ditch isn't going to give you the heights to put your fill over it and you're going to have to have a bump in your driveway, which would mean we don't want that because that runs water down into the garage.
There's also a note on here that says precaution, not have abrupt changes in grade resulting in outpouring.
That's what we added, we added that to make sure, to your point, after we talked.
But that, that's cured the problem of not having enough fill to make the pipe work.
Are you, are you concerned, are you concerned that the fact that the ditch is so shallow that you don't have enough room to slip 18 inches in there?
And this with 12 inch on top of it.
Well, that's an engineering thing. That's a, that's a design problem for the design people.
Well, but there's no reason for us to open ourselves up for them to not design-
I don't, I don't deny that. I don't deny that.
I mean, we're getting along now. And, I mean, plastic makes it nice, but-
Well, the dual wall ADS pipe is great stuff. Do whatever you want to do. The single wall is a little sketchy.
Well, let's just change this, do the dual.
Do we know if the proposed pipes that they are, that Executive Home has, if it's the dual wall?
It's the dual.
That's what I thought because it's smooth, he said it's corrugated on the outside and it's smooth on the inside.
And that's a much different product than the other one.
Yeah, the spec I'm seeing at other jurisdictions is all, some of them call out smooth wall.
Okay, so it's basically double lined, right? You've got the outside housing and a slick-
But if you don't specify it, somebody's going to-
And that's kind of part of what this, I was trying to say is make sure we understand that. Last question. I don't see anywhere in here that tells what the minimum slope in these pipes have to be. Now granted, it depends on how big the pipe is to what the slope has to be, right? Basically flow dynamics, right? But we certainly want a minimum and we certainly don't want those culverts in there. Otherwise, we won't be moving any water.
Got you. So under seven here?
Yes ma'am.
A, that's already in our ordinance, it's driveway culvert shall be sized to pass 100 year ditch flow capacity without overtopping the driveway and then the-
That's, that's not flow.
I know. I'm just, what is in here? And if we need to add something to say must be placed at the flow line according to engineer's special design?
Yeah, I need to think about it just a minute, but-
If we want to say something like that, because that's the big thing that we are, whether it's metal, concrete or plastic, that's, that's what this acknowledgement and hopefully does is that these builders, when they have to sign that, we go out there and if Keith takes out the laser, takes out the GPS and it's not at the correct flow line, we're going to make them, if we get a complaint, we're going to-
So generally when they do these, are they calling out the fall in those culverts or are they just slipping?
Culverts.
No, I'm not talking about construction, I'm talking about the drawings. Do the drawings show the elevation of both ends of the culverts?
I don't think they're giving us the inverts. I think they're relying upon the grade that was on the grading plan.
Well, just whatever, whatever the ground is and that may be enough and it may not be enough.
Yeah.
Depending on how much is silted in.
Well, that's the other part.
And that's the other change.
It should be, it should be the grade of the road typically.
The house number 50, it's got a whole bunch more silt.
So the interesting part is, you know, we all see these metal, galvanized metal culverts that we use all over this country. So you get to East Texas and Louisiana, they don't do that at all. Every bit of that galvanized steel is coated with a plastic coating, becoming rotten.
It won't. Well, there, yeah. But here, that's the other thing that John has said. We have issues with the metal pipe.
But the truth is, if it doesn't sit in water all the time, it'll last a long time. But if you keep a foot of water on it all the time, it's not going to last as long. Anyway, just things to think about, right?
I think it was more-
We ought to have in here.
We certainly want to say that we, we're talking about the dual wall or, or smooth CCP or however you want to phrase that.
Well, we ought to get the proper spec for that. And then we ought to state that they're going to give us a slope at each end of the driveway.
Well, either into the culvert, right?
Yeah, the culvert. And then-
Well, they should be able to figure out the flow from that. If you say the, so the problem, what happens is, is you say the ditch will carry a hundred foot, 100 year flood. Well, that's great. The culvert won't. Because the ditch is three times as wide as the culvert.
Yeah, all the time.
And we're okay with that as long as everybody knows that. And really, I don't want a culvert that, that'll run 100 year flood. It'd be big as a house.
Right.
Anyway, there's lots of pieces of that, right?
Right, and then-
And then the last question is-
If we use the double wall, we don't have to worry about whether it meets ODOT's spec or-
I wouldn't think you'd have to, but you'll-
Manufacturer's-
If you go look, that'd be fine.
But that's what we have in here is that it has to meet the manufacturer, be installed, excuse me, according to manufacturer's specification.
Well, there's definitely reason ODOT isn't saying follow manufacturer's spec.
That's probably true.
And, but if, but if the double wall and you're comfortable with that, I'll be comfortable with that. So we can get the proper spec to call that out on all of the, I mean-
If you're going to use plastic pipe, it needs to be dual wall.
Yeah.
Smooth.
So we could change-
Of all the drives.
Yes, yes.
You've got all those different kinds and we've got to go back and find out what manufacturer's-
So the HDP is the standard, what they call ADS pipe. I don't even remember what the name becomes, but that's what does the general names kind of like.
Well, there'll be, there'll be an industry standard spec.
It's not very thick, but it's got the corrugated on the outside and then it's got a smooth that's probably three eighths, something, maybe, maybe a little thicker than that, but it'll hold up.
Yeah. So we get, we get the manufacturing specs for that because they'll have a standard spec for that.
I'd be interested to know what ODOT has to say about it too. I mean, it's worth looking into.
Check that out. And then-
So the last question I have is, is I think that the concrete is really going to reinforce bridging over those culverts. So is, how many semis are going to go across this? Never?
Residential driveway.
Wait, 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 wait. Now, you just said subdivision regulation, we can have commercial.
So-
You just, wasn't that what you just said?
So yes, in this, you can have, you can have that, you can have, use this pipe in other applications.
So-
Not just driveway.
And I'm not telling you exactly what needs to be done, but I'm telling you the heavier the weight, the more material you need on top of the pipe so that it doesn't crush. And you probably need your engineer and not your guy on the planning commission to tell you what that needs to be, but that, that needs to be looked into.
I agree. And so in this right here, the culvert pipe regardless of material must be installed per the manufacturer's specification. So if we get plans in for a new residential subdivision and-
Manufacturer specifications for what?
For-
For a car?
Installation.
For installation.
Installation later.
So during, so when we get paving and drainage plans in and we, I've got a final class-
So it is for HS20, so it does call out the loading spec.
Okay, what's the loading spec?
I got an email today for it, but I don't have it with me.
Oh, it's all right. She can tell me later. It's okay. All I'm trying to say is if we get really heavy stuff, we need to make sure we got enough cover over that pipe we don't have to.
Right.
Since we're crawling into these regs anyway.
So let's say we're, we're on 24th Street. Let's take passing crossings for example. And they're coming in off 24th Street and they've decided to go with this, instead of, they've reinforced concrete or any metal, they're going to start, they're going to use the corrugated-
So the dual wall corrugated is probably almost as strong as the galvanized steel. But I'm telling you, all of those products need a certain amount of cover over them to make sure they don't egg.
So when we get some paving and drainage plans in for that and they're proposing this type of pipe, that's what we already look at when we go in and they've got storm sewers, storm crossings, they're using this pipe, that's what we're, we look at that when we're doing the-
And I apologize, I see stuff that's a lot-
No, it's fine. No apologies, that's very-
Well, but when, when we look at that, when are we ever looking at the load on that? Because it's not many of those drainage-
Maybe not the load, but the requirements for the coverage, the specifications, the requirement-
But it varies with-
So the only coverage we've got that I know of is a foot right here. We haven't stated anywhere else in the regs that it has to be anything other than a foot, a foot good everywhere.
Right, that's the minimum. And so in the spec, it says that it has to be HS20. So HS20 is the minimum designed load recommended by Ash Topper Bridges on interstate highways. The loading is based on a hypothetical vehicle with one 8,000 pound axle and two 32,000 pound axles.
That'll, that'll move a lot. Probably going to be okay.
It's going to be a concrete truck coming in the drive-
Yeah, I think you'll be at 32,000, right? Two 32,000, that what you said?
Yes.
In one eight. So that covers you about 70,000 pounds with three axes. That should be it? Should be okay?
So if we use the H-
Which is what's in here.
Okay. See, thank you.
And do we want to specify that they've got to have the concrete or asphalt?
So our detail calls out, they do call out asphalt, big and Portland cement, doesn't it?
So it's six and five, right?
It's calling out six inches minimum asphalt or five inch minimum Portland cement.
The only place that I would say, because we passed that regulation ordinance amendment several years ago, requiring all new driveway connections besides on ag to be, have a concrete or asphalt approach that matches the current road. So you're always going to have concrete over-
Anything new.
Anything new, yeah. The only, the only caveat in that is the allowance for ag properties where you haven't, you're not, say you're on a section line road and I'm going to pull a tractor in and out and I'm, that's what I'm using it for. And then that was, we were like, okay, then that's okay. But any residential driveway, so if I'm building a house and I'm on ag property, I still have to adhere to that connection requirement to any paved surface. So you're going to have that, either the asphalt or the concrete cover.
So let me back up again to the one previous question I asked. So the ditch is designed for 100 year rainfall. What is the culvert designed for?
It should be the same.
You know that can't be true.
That is our requirement.
Even the kiddos, I mean, you don't have to have high math to know that it won't fit in a hole.
Right, I know. Exactly.
Anyway, it's something to think about.
The ditch is, so but how-
Yeah, no, I know, I know. So my question is, how are they deciding what size of culvert to put in?
We always just had the minimum is 18 inches.
Okay.
Is the minimum requirement. And then remember, maybe it was two or three months ago, we passed that ordinance amendment that if they wanted to deviate, because we were getting people, well, I only need a 12 inch pipe. I only need, you know, I don't need that whole 18 inches. If they want to deviate from the minimum 18 inches, they're going to have to get an engineering report, stamped engineering report to show and show that range for that property that they would be allowed to reduce that 18 inch minimum.
So what's the maximum frontage that this would apply to?
The maximum frontage?
That's really a question.
16 foot?
No, 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 no.
You're talking about the size of the driveway or are you talking about? So the maximum, I, I mean, you could have, this could be on a-
It can't be on ag.
This could be on, uh-
Not talking about ag, we're just talking about-
Talking about-
Two acres, right?
Two acres, yeah. So on any section line, they have-
Well-
300 feet, 200 feet, how long?
Well, the minimum requirement is 100 frontage.
No, no, so what, what, if you picked a square two acres, what would that be?
Well, but it can be more than two acres.
I know two.
If we can do it with E3, that's five.
No, E3 is 27,000.
Oh, E1, I'm sorry.
Yeah, E1 is 8,000. So, so minimum frontage, the thing with it is though-
Well, I'm trying to figure out what the maximum frontage is that is not ag. So it'd be 4.9 acres, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, but you could have more than that and still have that zone.
You have 20 acres E3.
Yeah, I could have more than that, that would be on a frontage and have a ditch, you know.
I'm just saying the bit, longer the ditch, the more culverts you've got to have to have, right? And my problem is, is if you've got 600 feet of ditch and you've got a lot of work coming to that ditch, right? And all you say is you have to have an 18 inch culvert in that 600 feet.
Just in the driveway, in the driveway.
Well, but it's saying if you're draining over 600 feet into that 18 inch.
I'm just, worst case, right? I'm looking at worst case.
Yeah, that's worst case.
Well, it is. I mean, yeah, it is. I know it is. Anyway, I, I don't know if that needs to be fixed today, but-
Well, that's the minimum. So you're saying you may need a greater size?
You may need something bigger than 18, but my question is, how do you, how do you get them there?
I see what you're saying.
And maybe that's not a thing for today, but it probably needs to be thought about.
In our discussion here, something that's just coming, a question, is as we're doing this and we're putting our 18 inch culvert in and using the head wall and we get our big rain and it's going to overflow the driveway. Should there be any discussion about the fact that you shouldn't drain it down next to, into the garage?
I'm confused. What does the garage have to do with the culvert? I'm going to explain it.
Well, it won't flow all the water, so the water starts overflowing.
Well, if it rains over 100 year flood, it's going to flood everywhere, right? And she just told me that it was going to run 100 year flood down through that ditch even if it wouldn't fit for that culvert.
And that's what, the rest of that, that other 50 year worse of that rain goes around and it goes across the guy's driveway.
At some point, you cannot engineer for worst case. I'm sorry, that's why they just do 100 year instead of 500 year. I mean, how safe is safe? I mean, that's where you end up getting, right?
People don't want to fly in their cars.
Yeah.
Or engineer for 50% of the time.
Yeah.
It, it's just, we've, we've got a case now where they put the driveway in in such a way that they, when the ditch didn't take it, it goes down right to the guy's driveway and into his garage.
Sound like a design flaw.
Yeah, you shouldn't buy that house. It just hit me that when we're saying-
Well, that's that whole conversation that we had about is 18 inch big enough, right?
Right. Okay, well, when we finish looking at this, do we want them to put the elevation into the pipe? Because we're talking about the time-
Well, let's talk about this. If, if we made them put the, the elevation at the inlet and the outlet, right? How is that going to be any different from the flow line of the ditch?
That's right. Shouldn't be.
That's what you should be.
What?
Not going to get water flow, it's different.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so just live with it.
Got it.
So when we get the flow line of the ditches that they say are-
Well, the first thing is, is right, a grass lined ditch and a culvert, if you start looking at roughness coefficients, it starts changing when you try to get through there. Then all- That all goes back to that, yeah, you're getting the ditch and running through there, but it won't all go through that little pipe. And that's how you end up overflowing it, running it out the street, and go down the neighbor, and he gets to squeeze his garage, right?
Yeah.
Or Portland.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so what, basically, what we wanna get, is we wanna get the specs...
We wanna get, make sure we've got our dual-wall plastic.
So Jeff came up with the language, and just said that shall in no event be less than the dual-wall design. So we can add that in under C1.
Yeah, that's fine.
But shall in no event be less than the dual-wall design.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's fine, well, it says dual-wall, uh, it, it says plastic, dual-wall?
That's already said.
Same, fair.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Proves the fact.
Okay, so that was what it was referring to, okay. Yeah, I think that'll work.
What's the, is there an inspection process to make sure that this would be installed by the manufacturers or by the engineers' design?
So, we have three inspectors, the entire city, and we do, come out and do driveway inspections when they do the concrete, so they will be able to take a look at that. They're not gonna go out and shoot...
Right.
We're not gonna shoot grades or anything. That's why that agreement is in place, because that's up to them to do. We're gonna look at it, and they're gonna go, yeah, it's gonna meet the minimum requirement. They're gonna have that, the driveway before they pour, they go out there, that's it. That's why that, like I said, that acknowledgement's there.
Yeah, my only concern is going from steel to plastic on, in an approach. Um, there's a lot of breaking that's done, and similar to like, um, any kind of dumpster pad, that all of the concrete around the dumpster is reinforced concrete, where it's got rebar in it to help with the tensile strength of it. You don't have that same tensile strength with asphalt. So if you're taking the steel out of this culvert, you don't have that same tensile strength on an asphalt approach. So I, I see there being weakness in that respect. If this, if you have a plastic pipe with asphalt on top of it, even if you do have the granular backfill that's required on concrete. If an engineer's okay with it, then I'm okay with it, but that is my comment and my concern.
So are you, are you more concerned with the slope or with the sheer wall?
I'm not concerned with the slope, I'm concerned with the, the tensile strength of the pipe.
No, no, I understand, but in the application, would you be more concerned if it were the, a flat wall or, or a slope wall with plastic?
Uh, so that's my second concern. I would be, with it being sloped, plastic degrades with sunlight, and so, so plastic would be more susceptible to degradation as opposed to a flat wall.
Still lasts a long time, but yeah.
It'll be 10 years before you see something, but 15 years you'll start to see issues, and which further exacerbates the issue of...
He's right.
So we have a requirement for a 6-inch minute asphalt or 5-inch minimum concrete?
And that's great for driving on, on approaches, you have a lot of starting and stopping. It's that, it's that force that puts your, your asphalt and concrete, wherever your, your pad is, in tensile, where your compression is great, you can set up any, you know, 32,000 pound truck on an 8-inch square, and it's gonna be pile of concrete because of the compression strength. As you start to move it, that angular momentum and forces you put on it is starting to pull the material in different directions. That's why you have rebar by all of your dumpster pads, because as that truck is going to stop, it's pushing it forward, the back of it's going the opposite direction, and you're coming to a stop to pick up the load, drop it down, you're backing out. So it's all of those angular momentums that I see an issue with this plastic being used. Because it's at an approach where there's stops and starts all the time. I think that if an engineer's okay with that and they know those loads, my concern is that a developer comes in, puts all these plastic pipes in the culvert, and then it's moving day, and we have three semis or moving trucks that are coming in and out of these driveways, they're starting and stopping, getting situated and pulling out, and then compression driveways, and the developers...
Well, what he saved the load, 232s and an 8? With a foot, and was that asphalt or was, was that with the concrete, or did it specify?
Did not specify. When I heard that, it made, made me feel better about it, but it's, it's making sure it's installed that way before the problem arises. It's, it's designed for interstate highways based on hypothetical vehicle with one 8,000 pound axle and two 32,000 pound axles. But I think with our memorandum that we got from the engineer, that was something that they were wanting to be very clear about. It's like, it's all about the insulation and the compaction besides that pipe, because it is, it's plastic pipe.
An HDP.
It's relying upon that compaction next to it. And this material is used all the time under parking lots, where you have three or four feet below it, it's got ag base up 12 inches, and then you're, you know, you know, maybe it's even four feet, it's all the way. Anytime you have this plastic product under a drive of any kind, whether it's a parking lot or whatever, you have ag base all the way up to your concrete. And it's fine, because the ag base, your, your gravel, it's a seven rock or whatever, is holding that weight. It's not being pressed on the pipe itself.
And your point is, is this doesn't require a specific ag, ag requirement underneath the asphalt?
I think it said 6-inch coverage. It's 4 inches of 3/8, is what that, the detail says.
Yeah, 4 inches of 3/8, anyway.
Oh, what else it says? Number four both ways.
Oh, it does say fours on 12s?
Uh, number four is at 8-inch both ways.
Woo, the slow paving.
For the slow paving, okay.
Oh, for the slow paving.
6-inch minimum, yeah, but the, the difference is, yeah, I've got, I see a 4 inches on 3/8 ag. That doesn't account for asphalt's not having the tensile strength that concrete has. If we had a, if we had a, an ordinance that all new approaches for concrete that were reinforced, I don't see that being an issue, but with it having asphalt on it, I see that being an issue.
Well, there's gonna be some folks, though, rocks that not been able to put asphalt on.
Oh.
Big rocks.
Yeah, big.
I don't know how to fix that. I like the plastic with a sheer wall a lot better than I do the slope wall.
I agree.
But I don't know that I'm ready to tell them they can't do it with slope wall. But who wants to do, use this ADS, I mean, so who wants to use this HDP5? Is this developers, residential?
Executive homes.
But it's being used throughout the community also.
Oh, they're using it now?
Well, I'm saying it's being used, I'm not saying it's being used, um, legally.
Okay, it's, it's present.
Oh, yeah. It's ver, it's very present.
Is it single-wall ADS or the...
No, it appears to be the corrugated dual-wall.
Well, it's not used. It's fairly new, if it's being used around here.
I will say that that was when we had to redo that Pacella, when he put the wrong side of the pipe, and it was piped correctly underneath the street, and they came back, and this was when Luke was here, and we had to go back, and he allowed, we out, allowed that through the variance process, that 153.013, to allow him, because it didn't have the allowance for the HDP pipe. And so with the engineering design and everything, and the way that he installed it, and when we reviewed it, it met our requirements for the coverage of the manufacturer, and they, they used that there.
So the ADS dual-wall's already been used, which is, and we've already approved it?
We did approve it, we did.
Alright, well, that's, that's relevant.
Yeah.
Well, it's approved with ODOT also, so sometimes in other jurisdictions, so... I mean, I think CMP has been phased out in many jurisdictions also, so just because it's just corroding, you know, it's...
And as we were just looking at this, this says our pipe will handle 100-year flood. Which I think is why we had to redo that in the Cheltenham, because his numbers wouldn't work.
It's, he did not build it for...
He did not get the elevations in those culverts in the right spot, remember that? I remember that.
When I went out and did our inspection, and found out it was robo-regging.
What I was talking about. Carl's right over here.
Pipe dammer and length sized to convey 100-year storm, I don't believe it. I don't believe it.
Probably not on the...
I'm, I'm gonna call baloney.
Now, I will say that in...
It's there, I see it.
Gordon, in Casey's front yard, they have two culverts.
No, I understand.
Which might make it meet that design requirement, I don't know, but I was impressed that they put two culverts.
Well, I didn't even see that, and I'm, I'm sure there's some developers that didn't see that.
Where's this guy?
Uh, page S10, top right.
Just right up.
On, uh...
And I hadn't touched it until we were sat here, and I was looking for the fill.
I don't think I need to talk about it anymore.
Right, so that's in the code also, so it's, it's in the code also. Design frequency, minimum design frequency for culverts shall be 100 years.
Okay.
Is, is there... Do we specify how the fill, the culvert's supposed to be anywhere? Would that be manufacturer's spec, right?
We are saying that it must be installed per manufacturer's spec.
And they say it's packed aggregate or packed something to some standard?
Yes. Yeah, it, it won't, it won't hold up otherwise for, for the plastic pipe.
It will if you put dirt, three-foot dirt on top of it, and I can put about 120,000 pounds on it.
With three-foot of dirt?
Yeah.
Well, there we go.
If nobody wants a culvert 6-foot deep, right?
Nobody does.
No humps.
No humps!
No humping this.
No dip. I really do think that us coming up with this acknowledgement of the drainage improvement is gonna help immensely, uh, because it won't be just those, you know, they think about the driveway at the very end, and, you know, they're gonna have to face it from the beginning, and we'll have reviews that we look at what they submit during the building permit process. So I, I think that this will make them submit, require them to submit detailed plans for that, for that driveway and for their culvert.
With that op, with that change, I think I'm okay.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Everybody else okay? So any public comment?
I think that I do have a public comment, sorry, but it's all, that a lot of this doesn't pertain to me, but some of it does. One of the concerns that I heard several times was, a good one he brought up, how do we hold them to doing, you know, when, when it got to talk about the elevation of the pipe, or how much cover's on top of it, or whatever? Like, I think for the people in this room, myself or any of us, we have to, as a developer, we have to turn in engineered plans. That gets engineered, so I don't, you know, feel like as a city, we have to say it has to have this many inches on top or whatever, 'cause he said, you know, manufacturer's specs, if manufacturer's specs say it has to have this many inches, we don't have that number, it's gonna be a hump. That person's going to metal. Or they're widening their ditch, you know, to have more than one, sometimes you don't get 18 inches, 'cause it's not deep enough, so sometimes you do three smaller ones. So I mean, like, some of our, some of the things make me laugh, because the 18-inch minimum solves not a lot. Because, you know, we can get the same thing if it's a shallow ditch, we, instead of using an 18-inch, we have to use like three or four or more, you know, or he said, I mean, sometimes we need a 36-inch.
I didn't say that today, but I have...
No, but I mean, like, we do, we do, I, some places where I've been at, you know, we have some big ones. So I think, for me, I feel fine with it, 'cause we're safeguarded with a civil engineer. Who, that has to come, but, you know, I mean, the civil engineer puts their stamp on it. And then, like Janay said, we have something the homeowner's gonna sign, or the developer or homeowner?
No, fair.
The ones that kind of make me a little, if we have a developer doing it, we have a civil engineer involved. If this is just me on a two-and-a-half acre piece that I, you know, next to me, and that person owns two-and-a-half acres and they're getting one house built, that's where I feel like, you know, they don't normally have a civil engineer, 'cause it's not a subdivision, or, you know, I mean, it's those where, you know, the thing that you're having somebody sign when they get a building permit, hopefully for a house, a single house as well, not just a subdivision. That way that landowner knows that if they put one in, that's the 18-inch minimum, because that's what our minimum is. If, if you guessed on that and it didn't flow right, that you're gonna have to have, an inch, you know, you don't have to have an engineer in this town to build one residential lot, that's understandable. But if we have problems with your tin horn, it's coming out at your expense, because you signed this. Sometimes 18-inch minimum's not gonna need it. But I feel fine with it, because a civil engineer's gonna have all the fix, all the things that were just out of our jurisdiction or our knowledge, but, you know, I mean, they, their specialty.
Thank you.
So, look, that 18 inches is so that you can clean it out. 12 inches sounds great, but trying to clean a 50-foot-long 12-inch pipe is probably mad. I'll say that.
What we do in a case, uh, this is sort of off-topic, but where my driveway is, there is no ditch, so, I mean...
You mean, you didn't build a ditch like you were supposed to?
There's not one of them.
There is no ditch.
Okay.
The road is the ditch.
Oh, the road is the ditch?
I mean, yeah, there's like, 18 inches is gonna be below grade and full of dirt, just because, there is no ditch.
Well, it sound like you need a ditch.
For miles.
They're supposed to pay it for a year and a half, so I, you know, I don't know.
I don't know. I'd have to look at, then, then, more questions, right?
Yeah. It's just, it doesn't, you can set a standard, but it doesn't apply everywhere, it's always...
Okay, well, there, there's a way to get a variance.
Yes, there is.
But my point is, is anything eight, smaller than 18 inches is really not yard clean out.
Yep.
I try not to put anything smaller than 36, but I'm in a different world, right?
That's a good world.
Oh, my goodness. Alright, I'd like to make a motion if y'all ready.
We're ready.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment subdivision regulation 153 dot 081, C1, C7, C8.
Subject to...
Subject to the amended, uh, paragraph submitted by City Attorney.
That states, but shall in no event be less than the dual-wall design.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, I have motion second, I'll play the second five.
I'm gonna abstain.
Thank you, abstain.
So I'm gonna abstain. I'm going to go out and discuss and pass possible action, and send a date for our next special meeting. Anybody really want a special meeting? See none, but the one, new business, old business, motion for adjournment.
Please.
Second. I'll play. You name it. Thank you.